The Board of Education in order for you to be able to please relax and drive to the central regions. There's a flag. We're going to ask the principal where the flag is.
I think we forgot the flag from the gym. It's okay.
Where'd you place the gym?
Let's go to the gym.
All right, here we go.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's okay. Don't worry. We're better off than that. All right, so can we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Dr. Francis, second, Ms. O'Neil, any discussion on the meeting agenda? All right, all who's in favor? Passes six zero. Ms. Olson is called in sick. She's not feeling very well and I don't know where Mr. Scher is. Six zero. All right, next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Dr. Francis, is there a second? Ms. Dayton, any discussion? All who's in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Passes six zero. Thank you very much. All right, so the next item is the COSCOB school recognition or relocation system. Do you want to go up here?
So, good evening, everyone. Tonight we want to express our appreciation for the support and good work of the entire Greenwich community coming together to restore COSCOB school classrooms. In particular, we want to thank our elected officials for their guidance and support, our town departments for their responsiveness, our relocation hosts, Old Greenwich Parkway for their warm welcome and for good care about COSCOB students and staff, and Community Men and Partners, Boys and Girls Club and the YWCA for opening their doors during the week COSCOB schools closed. Word Construction for their dedication and good work, our facilities director, Dan, Schoolman Watson and his staff for their unrelenting commitment to expeditions to complete construction and for keeping our students and staff and parents safe throughout. And finally, Jean Schmidt and Assistant Principal Mike Reed and all the COSCOB staff for keeping spirits high and making the best out of a challenging situation. So, we're going to ask a few people come up here to be recognized. Let me see. My former neighbor Bobby Walker Jr. and Boys and Girls Club.
Why do they keep lining up like we do with the students?
Bobby did an amazing job pulling his staff in early, real early, to make a commitment to the Greenwich Board of Education and to the students of COSCOB. So, thank you, Bobby. Our friends at the YWCA, Mary DeKernan and Arthur Smith. Again, another organization that opened their doors to the COSCOB school students and helped us get through that week. We'd also like to thank our host principals, assistant principals, and the entire community. So, we're going to start with Jen Benzavango with no flag, Caitlin King, and the Old Greenwich School community. Let's thank the Parkway community, Mary Ramble and Jeffrey Lindley, and the entire Parkway School community. I also want to thank, in particular, the COSCOB PTA and their presidents, Brian Zeller and Dawn Silver. Brian and Dawn had our backs the entire time. I really appreciate it, Brian. And finally, last but not least, Jean Schmidt and Mike Reed and the entire COSCOB school community. I just want to say one more thing about these two guys over here. I've never seen people hustle as much as I've seen Jean Schmidt and Mike Reed work through this whole entire, what do we call it? Operation. They were all, they were here, they were at Parkway, they were at COSCOB, then back again, and I just can't thank these two guys enough for pulling it all together for us. So, thanks in advance.
Oh, Ralph.
That's a great team. Good. All right, guys.
Special thanks to everybody. So, I went to visit COSCOB like I said a day or two after plans were in motion and I lost all the umbrellas I had in my car so that they could escort the students in the ring.
You still have them, so don't worry.
All right, so next up, so usually we have the principals welcome, but since we were already here because we had displaced meeting, Ms. Benzavango gets a free pass. So, the next portion is the public hearing. Karen, I don't know what I'm doing here. So, the GHS student government first.
Tonight, I have a nice subject to cover and one I'm personally looking forward to. Following the studying and stress-packed days of the midterms, student government was looking for something that could boost student morale moving into the second semester. We settled on a winter spirit week. The timeframe we selected was right between the end of midterms and the beginning of February break. This is the ideal time for a spirit week as it evokes the students' excitement for the first weeks of the new semester. For most spirit weeks, each day has a certain theme, and this one is no different. This week will have Blizzard Day, Sports Jersey Day, Grades Day, and Valentine's Day. Now, you may have noticed that I only mentioned four days instead of the average five-day school week, and that's because we have one day off. And while this is a tragic loss of school-spirit-boosting morale time, it actually works out pretty well. This means we will have another opportunity to have a big, school-wide after-school event similar to what we do on Friday nights. Student government is looking into its open skate night for GHS students at Dorothy Hammel or a movie in the student center. We're looking forward to this at GHS, and we will keep you in the loop as it develops.
Chairman Bernstein, Mr. Mayo, members of the board, and all meeting attendees. Yeah, so I'm Alex, and that's James. Sorry about missing the introduction, but I stand here before you today as thousands of GHS students anxiously keep refreshing snowdaycalculator.com to figure out whether they need to study for tomorrow's midterms. Right now, it's saying there's a 33% chance, which means 100% because that's how rounding numbers should work. Midterm exams were, in fact, one of the central focuses of student government's work of this past month. GHS's own junior and sophomore class presidents, Zane Cotter and Mark Chen, have worked tirelessly over the last two years on surveys that determine the origins and solutions for students' midterm stress, and the most recent results are in. With 952 responses, GHS's student government has obtained a data motherload, and we have been working on developing possible action plans for the finals exams this June. Last year, Dr. Winters said that the GHS experience for some can be like going through a paper shredder. That's going to change this year. In other news, GHS is having another blood drive. Our vice president of community service, Rena Lambert, and Ms. Foster of student activities have worked tirelessly to put together this wonderful event at the end of our upcoming spirit week. It'll be from 7:45 to 12:45 on February 1st, and if you don't come, you might as well never show yourself on GHS grounds again. I'm kidding, of course, but please come. There's a 33% chance we're not kidding. A recent student government event that definitely deserves recognition is a Vineyard Vines fundraiser that sophomore co-president Declan Garrett organized for his grade before this winter break. The sophomore class raised more than $3,000, and they're now considering having their junior prom at the Palace of Versailles. Sorry, that was a good lady. Bea Edmonds, the vice president of student concerns, and I have been also working closely with the GHS media center staff to keep GHS's infamous student center garbage from spreading to one of the school's most-loved spaces. In addition, we've been working on several recycling and composting initiatives, and we will have updates about those as well as the media center for you in February. Anyway, I need to go check snowdaycalculator.com again and maybe study for my math midterm. Come out for the blood drive and the winter spirit week sporting extravaganza, and as always, go Cardinals. Thank you.
Next up will be PTA Carol Sutton.
Okay. Good evening, Principal Benzavango, Chairman Bernstein and board members, Superintendent Mayo and Cabinet and members of the community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. And I'm also thankful today to live and work in Connecticut and in Greenwich where we don't have to fight for class size, less than 50 students, where we're actually not allowed to strike, but we have no need to as well because we have a law that puts a cap on our collective bargaining process. It's not allowed to go on for years and years and years, but we do hope as supporters of public school that we will all send our support to the teachers of Los Angeles who are fighting for what they need, including librarians, Mr. Hibson. They only get them once a week in many schools, and nurses too. So, it's hard to believe that we turned the corner on the school year. GHS students are hunkered down for their semester exams, the days are getting longer, the COSCOB community is under one roof again, and New Lebanon is in the throes of final planning for their long anticipated move. Regarding COSCOB, looks like they all left, but Greenwich teachers are fortunate to work with, are fortunate to work with people like that that dealt with the flood. With their steadfast work, the work of everyone recognized this evening and so many more who aren't here, especially Principal Schmidt and Assistant Principal Reed, their hosts at Parkway and here at Old Greenwich, everyone at Havemeyer, bus drivers and everyone else, teaching and learning continued for those students, and they had new experiences that they could not have imagined at the beginning of the school year. Building upon the experiences of Hamilton Avenue and Glenville, which are almost a decade ago, a course was set and the destination was reached on schedule. The New Lebanon community is next, and boy, are they ready. Earlier this week, actually yesterday, I was in New Lebanon, and I happened upon some student work, which was from a class of English language learners. And in my job, I don't see much student work anymore, so when it's there, I zone right in on it. And so, it seems like their assignment was to write about a place in the school and not just about it, but also about, you know, the mood and what it created. So, to really set the stage for what's coming up for New Lebanon, I thought I would just read this to you out loud. And I have permission, and it's by a student named Diana Diaz. And what she wrote was her, oh gosh, wait a minute. Wait, this doesn't happen to me. All right, so amuse yourselves. Sorry. So, the story is called, it starts out, it's called "Stage Horror" with a few exclamation points. Boom, boom, boom. The sound of footsteps on the wooden stairs echoes through the gym. After fighting the blue, heavy curtain, I find myself on a dark, weary, and messy stage with the smell of dust and old wood filling the air. Dark wires coiled on the floor like venomous snakes, and small islands of garbage bags filled with unknown objects pepper the stage. While a lone saxophone case belonging to a former student tells a sad story, a happier story is revealed by the exit. A beautiful, brand-new, pink bike intended for a little girl sits by the stage door. In the midst of all this gloom, there is a bright, shining star, which is the enigma that is New Lebanon School. That's a good word for ELL. Okay, sorry. Although for a time there wasn't any hope of building a new school, Mrs. Riccio never gave up. Her actions reflect the belief expressed by Desmond Tutu. He said, "Hope is being able to see that there is light despite all the darkness. That bright light is what our New Lebanon School will be for us all." So, yeah, amazing. I was very, very, very moved. And once again, it is because so many worked so tirelessly behind the scenes and on the front lines that these students will be moving into their new home in about one month's time, and it's the coming of fruition of a process that was underway when the current fifth graders were in kindergarten. That's how long it's been going. So, we are very grateful to the board, the administration, for recognizing that after such a long journey, getting in there is extremely important. We are appreciative of all the thought went into that change and what's going to happen, how you've allocated the teachers the time and energy that they need to do it right. So, that, I'm going to go with the metaphor, you know, so that on that first day back, on Wednesday, the 18th, those students will walk in with the new light, the new dawn, and all that stuff. It's going to be their most important first day of school in a very, very long time. So, we are so appreciative. I don't have much else to say today, but on the calendar, if you want to get a little more confused, it's interesting that it's opened again because of primary day, and we understand that on primary day, the students need to not be in school. And I think it's the, there are two things about that. I think that on primary day, just as on election day, the teachers would appreciate being in school for a professional learning activity. And the other thing, reopening the calendar to look at it, the first day of school on August 23rd is fairly horrifying, and not just because it's August 23rd, it's a Friday, but because teachers who teach summer school and others, and students who have taken summer school, they're going to come back the next week, but regardless, teachers who teach summer school will have less than two weeks off, less than two full weeks off at the end of that opportunity. And I know it throws another monkey wrench in, but if we could have professional development on Columbus Day, on Election Day, and on Primary Day, I'm sure that we would greatly appreciate that. So, I hope you have a great meeting tonight. Thank you for everything you do, and look forward to hearing what you have to say tonight. Thank you.
Next up is the PTA project.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayo, Chairman Bernstein, Principal Benzavango, members of the board, Cabinet, and community. I'm Karen Hirsch, President of PTA Council, and with me is Cricket Diamond, First B P. As is often the case in January, we find ourselves energized with the possibilities that a new year brings, yet still writing last year's dates on checks. It's that balance, the desire to leap forth into the new yet retain what is known and tested, that is reflected in many of the conversations we have had about our children's education. Balance and discussion are important, as is the courage to make change. We appreciate the wisdom this board brings to the process and being given the opportunity to engage in the discussion. We'd like to thank Irene Prezi for coming to council, coming updating council on the latest personalized learning initiatives in the district last Friday. This was a good step in communicating with parents, as the lack of consistent and proactive communication remains a large driver of concern for parents, and as such, council's looking forward to tonight's discussion on the community relations policy. Parents in council have long advocated for more homeschool communication. It's not just critical for our PTAs, but also helps parents to be effective partners with the district when it comes to their students' education. Parents want to know what's going on in the classroom and to have ways to support learning at home, and parents would welcome more opportunities to connect with the schools and share feedback to aid in planning and decision-making. Council and our 15 PTAs are happy to work with you to find ways to support your goals in this area and others. January also marks the midway point of the school year, and yet we're still discussing next year's calendar. PTAs and committee chairs shared their members' thoughts on the proposed revision, and the response was overwhelmingly in support of option one. Though parents are disappointed to lose Columbus Day as a decision to combine two professional learning days into one on that day was made to support staff preference, help parents plan for childcare, and to create opportunities for college touring without missing school. This is not the first time the board has had to revise an approved calendar to reflect primary day. We ask that you take this into account going forward. Tonight's memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer reminds us how grateful we are now to have two officers providing a safe learning environment for our students. It also reminds us that though these concerns have been shared with you before, there are still issues with buses arriving on time at GHS. Being on time does not mean getting to class by the first bell. There are students who count on a hot breakfast once they get off the bus, and when buses are late, they are not able to get food. There are still also reports of overcrowded buses at middle schools with drivers asking students to sit on the floor. The fact that we're still sharing these safety issues with you is alarming, and a solution must be found. Turning out of the policy of use of physical force, parent opinion is certainly varied in this area, and while we understand the need for a district-wide policy addressing types of intervention and for having a detailed protocol, we do have concerns with the policy as written. While it states that the use of seclusionary, that the use of seclusion is an emergency intervention, nowhere does it stipulate that these types of interventions should only be used as a last resort, nor does it outline under what circumstances this policy would be triggered. The policy states that staff will be trained, which is imperative, and however, it notes the creation of a plan by which the board will provide training. Council cannot support the approval of this policy until such a plan is drafted and discussed, allowing time for public feedback. Our EDS chairs also feel it is worth the board investigating what restraint and seclusion truly look like, as well as knowing the prevalence of use in GPS prior to calling for a vote.
Moving from safety to curriculum, we are pleased to see the academic quarterly report for STEM and library services on tonight's agenda, and to be taking a deeper dive into curricula with the program inventory and outcomes project plan. While the plan's stated goal is to evaluate programs and gain a deeper understanding of the impact of investment in order to inform budget development and operational plans, we ask that your first questions not focus on the financials, but instead ask how is the program best serving our students? Please take into consideration your definition of results as measures of a program's success, as results do not always translate into measurable testing data. There are other factors to consider. Programs are not always designed to meet the needs of the majority of students. Not all educators teach the same way. There are differences in consistency of delivery. Students often have subs. Are they trained in delivering lessons? Ultimately, this review should focus on the needs of our students, not the needs of a bottom line. The GHS Course of Studies Guide has also been evaluated and updated, making it a good time to review the opportunity block to see how it can best serve the needs of all GHS students and align with new graduation requirements. On a final note, council supports the New Lebanon PTA and school community's request to allow the staff the full day of February 19th to unpack and be fully trained in all safety procedures and drills. This day of training and planning will ensure that not only will the staff be fully prepared in the event of an emergency, but that the transition for students is as welcoming and flawless as possible. There is no shortage of important topics that we as a district face. Transforming education, addressing safety concerns, and upgrading our facilities are all central to the mission to provide the best education in the safest and most supportive environment possible for the children of Greenwich. To do this requires the willingness to change, the prudence to stay the course, and the good judgment to know where to draw the line. Be wise, be bold, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Our next portion is our community comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We had one speaker signed up, Kevu. If there's anybody else that wants to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item, I'd ask that you be ready to come up back here.
Can I just be short and simple to all? I'm actually speaking tonight regarding the proposed addition of language to our seclusion and restraint measures to include the exclusionary timeouts. I'm concerned with these additions as well as some aspects of the policy in general. First off, it doesn't define how long actual timeouts can last or a maximum time. The language specifies a 15-minute checkpoint time, but then a decision can be made to continue the seclusion for another period of 30 minutes, and then potentially another, and so on. I believe this is bullet B, three pages in. I'm also concerned about putting a child in a room with only video surveillance. That's about four pages into the document. In addition to considering privacy issues, how can we ensure the safety of the child during this time? How can we ensure that no harm will occur if the child is alone in a room with just a video camera? Does the camera have sound capabilities in case a child's call is not within earshot? Parenting experts and coaches all agree that anger and behavior challenges only really dissolve when they are heard and understood. How does this get accomplished when there is potentially no one in the room to talk to? Kids need constructive problem solving, a person to talk to, coping strategies, and a discussion of tools and strategies. The policy lists substitute teachers as school employees. However, many may not be aware that a student has 504 and IEP accommodations. They may not be properly trained, and they may not understand the parameters by which they can use force. In a situation like this, it seems we can be putting a lot of power in the hands of someone who may not have the proper training, who may not even have a teaching degree. The only required qualification to be a substitute teacher is a bachelor of arts degree. I feel that this policy needs to be reviewed, and I am in agreement with PTA Council's statement that the language additions should not be included until a fully vetted training program is established. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? All right, here are none. We will close the public hearing and the public hearing, and move on to our monthly reports, starting with Superintendent.
Thank you, Peter. Quick update on our facilities. As you all know, we've had some, a few minor water issues around the district, so I just wanted to update you and tell you where we are. This past week, on the 15th, the gymnasium at Greenwich High School reopened. They are playing a game as we speak tonight. So, the partners are back on the court, and it's good news. That's a bit earlier than we had expected, so we thought it was going to happen on the 21st, and there we are, they're playing their game tonight. Thank you to Dean Watson and Lori O'Connell for that. The PAC, Performing Arts Center at Greenwich High School, is also a victim of some flooding, will open sometime next week. We're not sure what day it'll open next week, but probably closer to the end of the week and the beginning of the week. So, that's where we are right now. I'm still saying February 1st, and nobody gets their hopes up, but I think we're going to open that sometime next week. The mechanical room, which is another area that we had some damage, is going out to bid, so that work is taking a little bit longer, but we have hot water in the science wing, our fire alarms work, and our sprinkler systems work. So, it's, right now, it's just, it has to go out to bid so that we can get the right pieces of equipment into that, back into that mechanical room. Another update that I have for you all is on our opportunity block at Greenwich High School. So, Mrs. Tolata and Mr. Pietraski provided me with some data, so I'm going to share you with that data, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about it. This semester, we have 103 opportunity block offerings. 77 of them are unique offerings, and 72 teachers are running our opportunity block. We're up... Another update that I have for you all is on our opportunity block at Greenwich High School. So Mrs. Tolada and Mr. Pietrowski provided me with some data, so I'm going to share you with that data, then I'm going to talk a little bit about it. This semester, we have 103 opportunity block offerings. Seventy-seven of them are unique offerings, and 72 teachers are running our opportunity block. We're up seven teachers from first semester, so that's good news. So during the first cycle of the second semester, two options are available. So a cycle at Greenwich High School is eight days, so for those of you who haven't gotten to Greenwich High School yet and be able to talk Greenwich High School speak, but the first cycle of the second semester, there's two options for the students. One is that they can remain in their scheduled last block class and get extra help from their teachers, start their homework or complete a test or assignment, or go to a different classroom and get extra help from a teacher. On February 5th, the first day of the second cycle, students will be able to attend their scheduled opportunity block offerings. The opportunity block offerings will be scheduled one time per cycle for the second semester. Students may request up to eight opportunity block offerings. They may also choose no opportunity block offerings, which means they will avail themselves to the two options that I just spoke about. The timeline is going to be, we have to finish the ZAN first, and then the students will get to review the offerings on the GHS website and in Aspen, and then the students will get to select their opportunity block offerings. And then the administration will load those offerings into the schedule, and they all they will go. We have a new opportunity block offering, which I wanted to highlight tonight, because it's something that we had brought up a few months ago. The senior employment opportunity block. And the description of it is as follows. Are you a member of the class of 2019 who needs to be at work by 3:45? Students 18 or above, member, must provide a complete written promise of employment from each of, each place of employment. Students 17 or younger must provide a certificate of age, working papers for each place of employment. All students regardless of age will need to submit a notarized parent permission slip. And then they will be, they're responsible for their own transportation, but they will be able to go off to work. So that's something that the board had requested that we do. So we did get to go out for earlier practices, and now we're going to have our kids be able to go to work. So I think that's two new things that the high school has done, and I appreciate that. And Jennifer Ayton just said she likes it as well, so there we go. So thank you, Peter.
All right. Moving on to reports of officers, committees, and liaisons, we'll start at this end. You want to start at the other end? We'll start at the other end. Let's see, Dr. Francis, I know we have policies on the agenda tonight, do you want to say anything now?
One other really quick, not, just to plant the seed, which is, there is a series in the policy 000, which is mission, goals, and objectives. We just, I think as a board, need to think about when, if, how we want to approach that, so kind of go along that idea at some point in the process.
Okay, thank you. I'll move back down this way. I'll do new them. On time, under budget, did I say under budget? I did. The opening will be immediately after the February break. Move to that. Ms. Ayton.
So for the benefit of the public, I wanted to share the 2019 legislative priorities of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. I'll give you just the highlights, and I'll truncate the language just to through it. Cultural competency training for teachers, removing barriers to personalized learning, funding a comprehensive education funding system that's fair, equitable, and predictable for all districts, avoid the transfer of state obligations to local property taxpayers, limit local district funding responsibilities for out-of-district special education costs, and increase state reimbursement, remove mandates that fail to promote student achievement, remove barriers and support incentives for voluntary inter-district collaboration, and incorporate in high school graduation requirements opportunities for business to school to business partnerships to meet global workforce needs. So I have, so I have two committee updates. So one is ExCon, ExCom, excuse me. We met on January 8th, and some of the student concerns that were discussed, and I think I brought this up at our last meeting, but now this is the public session. The lines were repainted in the parking lot, and some of the older lines are still showing through. They weren't blacked out, so it's causing some issues with the parking. Also, there was a suggestion made to speed being able to pay for lunch to have a pin-only line in the cafeteria. And then this is timely with our course catalog, or course offering discussion. Apparently, there's a rumor that 13A is going to turn into weighted and honors, and someone implied that somebody on the board of that had indicated that this is possible, but Mr. Pietrowski and I assured the students that that wasn't the case, so hopefully that rumor is put to, to bed. Also, food services. We had two committee meetings since our last board meeting, met on Friday, the 21st, and yesterday, the 16th. We have started to put the bones together for an RFP based on the USDA Food Services Management Committee template. We also discussed the idea of going out with an innovative RFP to meet the needs of our Greenwich Public School students and the parent feedback that we received from the surveys. And finally, we discussed the idea of piling some of the innovative ideas at an elementary school and middle school. And with that, I wanted to add an agenda item to our next business meeting on, I think it's February 21st, thank you, to talk more about some of the ideas for a pilot that the Food Service Committee has been discussing.
Anything else? Nope? All right, moving on to discussion items. So the first discussion item is the GHS Course of Study Guide. Prezi.
I think we need another microphone. Good evening. Within your board packet, you have the GHS Course of Study Guide for 2019-2020, school year, for your information. The Course of Study Guide, as you know, provides all learners with course offerings and learning options accessible through GHS. The guide serves as a useful tool for student and family high school planning. A summary has been provided to outline in the beginning of the document. Thank you. Outlining the specific changes to the courses, course descriptions, credits, and expectations for the graduating class of 2023, which now provides a diploma system that prepares all learners for the future of their choosing with all work and service at the vision of the graduate. With me tonight is Rick Pietrowski, our headmaster at GHS, and Dana Tolada, our assistant headmaster at GHS. Both worked with a team at the high school and program coordinators to develop this comprehensive resource to support high school planning and communication to families. Thank you for your questions. We did provide you with responses, although it was this evening, but we, we did our best to get those to you, but we are here to answer any additional questions.
I can't find my notes, but I know that I was concerned about the fact that the notices that go home to parents about students not being on track for graduation do not go home in Spanish. That, to me, is, is a great disservice to population in our schools, and if we have to develop a policy that says everything has to go home in Spanish and any other appropriate language, but I think that's a great battery there. And I also think that any information on Wright Tech, which I don't think is sufficient the way we do it, sending home information to parents, I think there ought to be a parents' night so that they have as much access to that information as you would do with the students going off to college, and that information should go home in Spanish as well.
Picking up on the Wright Tech question, I'm sorry to plague you about Wright Tech, but for five years, I've been advocating strongly for dual enrollment. I will not approve the Course of Study Guide without dual enrollment at Wright Tech. This is something that is entirely feasible. The head of the Connecticut Technical High School System has said it's feasible. His principal at Wright Tech has said it's feasible. Windrose has job training as part of its program. There's even a possibility that there could be a Windows program that just runs afternoons and evenings, which would leave the morning free if people wanted to pick up technical skills. There are many ways to do this. The idea is that career technical training is front and center on the governor's agenda. It's front and center on the Connecticut School Board's agenda. It's front and center for our state economy, and I feel strongly about it. I'm sorry to be putting up a barrier or obstacle to the Course of Study Guide, but after five years, that's my recourse. So next time, it will come back to us, and I'll discuss it again.
Ms. Raven.
So first, I wanted to thank you for putting in the summary, all the changes. That made it super easy to actually get to everything. And this is along the lines of the student stress. It's the soft cap for the APs. I was just wondering, because it says that students would meet with their counselor, is that something that they do proactively, or if they've tried to sign up for too many AP courses, it's flagged, and they're kind of notified and brought in? And then just one other thought. We approved a budget for fiscal year 1920 that will have some fewer teachers at the high school. So have you started to think about any courses that might be on the bubble for potential
Let's see if I can address these one at a time here. In terms of, we'll go backwards. In terms of courses they may not run, we won't know that until we get all the course, basically, all the kids sign up for the course and do their thing. And in terms of, we have identified four courses that we are not running. We've already taken mine with the Course of Study Guide. But we'll take a look at what the course requests are for the, for the teachers, for the students are, and we'll do an analysis and make, make some tough decisions there. With respect to, in respect to Wright Tech, I understand your frustration in terms of last five years. I, we're in agreement, is that we're doing everything possible to try and get this dual enrollment, because I think it's a great opportunity for to take care of the needs of some of our students there. I know there's been, we've been getting mixed messages, but we have a meeting on January 29th, and we're going to hope to get this finalized in terms of what we can do and we can't do, and we're going to try to get it in writing. So we will continue to pursue this. And then, there was one other question.
Soft cap.
Oh, the soft cap. That's always part of the conversation with the guidance counselors and the students there. Yes, Peter?
I'll, I'll do that, but this is Peter first. It's okay. That's all right. Just on, on the issue of dual enrollment, we're, we're not just looking at dual enrollment, we're looking at dual diploma. Basically, if a student goes to Wright Tech for all four years, we have the ability, there's nothing in state law, we've talked to them about this, about issuing them also a Greenwich High diploma.
And thank you for clarifying that. We're after the same thing, in terms of getting the diploma.
Okay.
I mean, Greenwich High School diploma.
Both.
So Rick, just sort of, I share with Ms. Ayton's frustration with this. I never, it's amazing to me to be in a school system, things take five years. I just don't live in that world in my entire life, so I never understand this. So if you're going to be able to get this done, something that somebody else was unable to get done, after years and years and years of this board asking for it, and you get it done in a couple months, I'll be remarkably impressed. And I know Ralph has made this a priority too, and tried to unstick this thing in the short time he's been there, been here. So if you two can go get this done, despite all the other people who blocked this every step of the way, that would be fantastic. My question would be, two parts. Is your objective to have this done so that it is a program for 1920? So students in 1920 would be, have the opportunity to do, I understand this is going, could be coming late if we're already at, yeah, it's going to come late if kids are going to enroll in this thing, because they have to do scheduling. I'm thinking about when scheduling's got to start. Well, so that's the first question. And the second question would be, part of the value with this is, we have this kind of goofy patchwork hangover, these are my words, obviously, tech ed program that's kind of hung around, and parts of it have gone away from high schools in the 80s and the 90s. One of the reasons that I was always interested, I think other board members were always interested, is Wright Tech had a complete and fully comprehensive technical education program. It was broad in its capability, but it was also deep in terms of what it offered. So my question would be, what would we then be able to, what's left over in ours, take out of our program if essentially we could get this terrific program that is well-developed at a great facility like Wright Tech? Those two questions, please.
We're still committed to our Greenwich Public High School Career Technical Education Program, which includes Family Consumer Science, Technology Education, which includes Engineering and CAD and manufacturing, and our business program. And in order to receive our state funding for those programs, we have to have components of that programming, as well as pathways. And we have spaces that are dedicated to those areas. So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, that you're not saying that we eliminate our CTE program, but we find a way to marry the two, Wright Tech and ours.
I'll give you an example. Irene, you have come to us before.
And I asked for guidance.
Which we've provided. Okay, you've come to us before as an example, and we've talked about what has evolved into a food sciences kind of curriculum. I mean, I can go back and look at, we can both go back and look at the tape together, right? And in some cases, we haven't been able to offer the depth that if someone were interested in a career coming out of, out of the high school in culinary sciences, where they could really be, go out and get a, a job if they were choosing to do that. You've been before us before and said numerous sentences, we're not able to have the depth of program. Wright Tech, which was built from scratch with commercial kitchens and all the rest of it, has a very deep program in that, as an example. So I'm not saying, of course, there wouldn't be things that we wouldn't want to have, but some of those, I think, that program, as you described to us before, has not been deep and rich. So my question then becomes particularly in an era where now we're talking about cutting teachers, first time in decades. We're talking about larger class sizes, to the degree that we didn't have programs that we can offer to children, but in more innovative ways, and then deal with some of these budget shortfalls that we're having. I'm interested in the strategy to do that.
I think we should go back to those questions, and again, we can resubmit the guidance that we asked for, where to begin, and we can discuss this.
If they, if, if the administrators need guidance, I would encourage the chair to schedule, put it on the agenda, where we'll provide that guidance.
And Dr. Field Day, that's how we had left it. Thank you. In addition to that, we've communicated the pathways that we have control over and that we're committed to, and I'd have to disagree, our students leave Greenwich High School and move right into high-level culinary programs, or even in the fashion industry, where they, they are able to open their own businesses. Okay, so you don't want to hear that right now, but I think it's important that we come back and have a conversation before we say that we're going to eliminate our CTE program and outsource it completely to Wright Tech.
Let me just clarify my question. I asked which courses.
Sure, we can.
Which courses. I didn't say which programs you could eliminate. I asked which courses would we, would, might potentially be duplicative, and therefore we can obviously retain that money and fund other things in the system. I'm not looking to get rid of it. That was my question. Rick, I'm sorry, I asked you, I asked those two questions.
With respect to the first question about 1920, then I wait till after the 29th to see what comes out of that meeting, and we'll get back to you and answer that question.
Are you, are you trying to get to 1920? Are you looking to say already, wow, that's going to be too quick, we're not going to do that? do this well, maybe we'll have to go beyond that?
I think I need to wait till after the January 29th meeting, and I, impossible. We would love to be able to do it for the 1920, because I think it would be a great thing for students. But I got to see what comes out of that meeting, Eric, and I'll be definitely willing to come back and report back. Thank you.
Dr. Francis.
I'm just trying to remember, and I can't at the moment, on the Wright Tech. Is there a consideration of having students doing part-time at Greenwich and part-time at Wright Tech? Okay.
We're hoping that will be part of the conversations on the 29th, to see what our possibilities are.
Because, you know, on the other side of the coin, I feel like there's a lot of against science courses or other things against math that we offer that they don't.
Absolutely.
So there may be students who would benefit from some combination.
That would be the ideal situation for our students.
Ms. Mayhew.
I was wondering why they changed from China Today to East Asian Studies, since there are 11 countries in East Asia? So is the title a little misleading? The question, the answer to my question, is this a new course? They said, no, this is not a new course, so why would you change the topic to be so misleading?
It's not a new course. I'm going to let Dana take this one. She did the research on this one.
No, it's not a new course. It is a title change, obviously. They felt that there would be more students who would be interested in taking it if it wasn't just to say China Today.
So it's misleading advertising? You're saying the curriculum isn't going to change?
The curriculum is not changing. So.
Is China Today only China Today? Or is, in that course, do they talk about other than China?
I don't want to mislead. So whatever the description is, it's the same description as last year.
Barbara, just so you know, that they do an orientation for Wright Tech for the kids in eighth grade, but not for the parents. They also do it for AIT and the Agriculture, AgriTech program at West Hill.
So we're an awful lot of parents for kids who go into college.
Right, so once we move on to actually having the program, then we should probably do an orientation for the parents as well.
Probably we should do it now, because kids can still qualify from eighth to ninth grade and ninth to 10th, so I don't see why we wouldn't have a parent meeting now, no matter what we do. And as for having a half-day program there and here, I think that's a shot in a million because of the way their school's set up and our rotating block schedule. So I don't think that's the answer.
I'll tell you what, you know what it'll do in terms of the China Today? Let us go, we'll come back to you on that one.
Yeah, I can help you. I've got the course.
China Today, I agree.
So you've changed the descriptor in the Course of Study Guide, because the current Course of Study Guide actually just says China.
Okay. Are we okay then?
On China Today? Yeah, I think you're going to be right. East Asia Studies. I just want to ask you a question on here. You said Intro to Latin hasn't been offered for a while. So there's still Latin 1, Latin 2, Latin 3, and then the Advanced. And the idea is that those are going to be offered annually, because I know for a lot of kids going to college, they need four years of the language in order to receive credit.
Latin's been, every level's been offered at least three, like three or four, five years. I mean, we built it up now to the point where with the Latin 1, Latin 2, Latin 3, Latin 4, then we got the others, Advanced. I'm pretty confident that we're continuing, unless the numbers for some reason drop off, and I don't, and I can't speculate that happening.
Ms. Davidson.
This is a difficult question. At the elementary and middle school level, we're moving towards an interdisciplinary STEM approach to educating students. At the high school, in ninth grade, we are now doing the opposite. And the opposite approach is to break apart integrated science into a series, a sequence of biology, chemistry, physics. Because those approaches are so different, and because we have a continuum of learning from K to 12, I'd like to understand how the NGSS works, so that students don't get to the high school used to a STEM program, and then suddenly find themselves in a silo.
Perhaps we can check out that more.
That's fine. Okay.
I think we need to come back on that question.
Ms. Stone.
Okay, so I'm probably the only one here who has not had children go through high school, and, oh, wait, I'm sorry, Peter, I just aged you. But.
Don't rush it.
One more year.
But I just want to lead off with, I am really impressed just with the study guide in general, and I feel like I'm happy I'm on the board, because hopefully I'll be up to speed by the time my kids go to high school, because this is really impressive. And I don't, I would love to just see how many other high schools out there have something this thick. So number one, I'm going to start off with that. So given that, I'm going to ask probably a pretty naive question, which is, in, for example, Fine Arts and a change in Mathematics and the AP Statistics prerequisite, it seems like you just changed some of the requirements to take certain classes. I assume that was based on student feedback, or the fact that you were probably overriding already in those areas? What made you make those changes?
I think that's all related to the class of 2023, with respect to the 25 credits, and the way our new graduate requirements are basically found in different clusters. We're trying to make it clear for these freshmen coming in what buckets these particular classes, and we're trying to get the language to be aligned with what we have in the state now.
Ms. Scher. Rick, this is just a confirmation question. I think the answer is here already. 113A does not have a, will continue not to have a credit uplift to it, yes?
That is accurate.
So that's what you're proposing, to just leave it as it is with this Course of Study? No change?
No change. Whether it's, you know, 112, 113, all freshmen need those studies and non-graduates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the effort on this one. Yes, we're writing a small college. All right, so the next item, Irene, where are you going? The Academic Quarterly Report.
So the next report is the Academic Quarterly Report with an evaluation of STEM and the Library and Media Services Program. With me are Chairless of STEM Coordinator Bob Hipson, our Library and Media Coordinator, and we do have Andrew Byrne, who is our Folsom House Administrator, but also oversees Mathematics for 912 at the high school. Oh, and Mr. John DeLuca, our Program Administrator for Science at the high school. So I know this report looks different in structure and so on, and I appreciate Dr. Francis's question. The reason why is that this, the approach was to ensure that we answered the five questions of program goals, program costs, achievement and accomplishments, program activities with the positives and negatives that attribute to the program, and the strategic levers of change. This also aligns with the new policy 6180, which is the evaluation of instructional programs. So we also have detail in there that evaluates the instructional strengths and weaknesses, the information for advanced planning, any data for public information, relationship between achievement and program goals, and the suitability of the instructional program, a lot within one report. And obviously, this is just one update, and then what we'll discuss tonight is a program inventorying review, that would be the deeper analysis. Also, this is the result of taking the information from the achievement report and doing a deeper dive, and where have we gone deeper into program planning and implementation since that academic achievement report in September now? So also, our points of pride within the document are outline our strength findings and challenges, might be new language, but we've found that helpful, as well as areas of focus. Again, we thank you for those deeper questions. We did submit those responses to you, and we can certainly help clarify or answer additional questions.
Dr. Francis.
So as I was reading it, I was trying to think back, and I only briefly was able to kind of read the response as I was rushing out the door. But, and I think you touched on the question of the STAR, because I had sort of, I was trying to remember our conversations about how we were going to do things a little differently this year. My understanding is we were sort of getting the big achievement report in the beginning, then you guys were kind of working through that, then you were going to create new interventions or the ways to address things, goals based on that, and then you were going to look and see what happened from STAR in the fall to STAR in the winter, and we feel like those interventions had worked. And so, you know, it sounds like our timing didn't work very well, because we haven't gotten that.
Correct.
But I sort of felt like that was, that was sort of where we're getting to, the big high level, then we're seeing, okay, this is our intervention, this is the impact of that, and did that work or not? And that was kind of how we were doing that. And I also had a sense that maybe we were going to be doing this again, although I can't imagine how we would do that on our agenda, but that there would be sort of more frequent touchpoints with those things.
So obviously, agenda planning happens around May, so in that design of the agenda plan, this was our best laid plan. And here we are, the window just re, is closing tomorrow, so then we need a couple of weeks where we send the data to ECRIS, and it's behind-the-scenes work, and so yet we won't have that analysis of growth, or those areas of focus, and how we then intervene on this new snapshot of our students. But I believe we're going to do the deeper dive in February, and so we would have more deeper analysis for you.
And can you give me like a couple, because as I was reading through it, I didn't feel like I had gotten sort of a clear sense of what were. Everything's fine. Sort of what were kind of the interventions that were put in, that we're going to be looking for results for with this data coming back with the STAR?
Specific to mathematics? It's very difficult to say.
As a result of our SVA analysis, we took a deeper and harder look at targets and claims, and looked at where our students were relative to their performance on the test, but also where they were with the three claims of procedures, and data analysis models, problem solving, and also communication and reasoning. And I went back over the last four years of SVA and found out consistently, and there's a chart in the report itself, that we are doing very well in concepts and procedures, less in problem solving and less in communication and reasoning. That was not the only data point we used. We went into the classrooms, we observed instruction, we surveyed teachers, we, in their professional learning evaluations, part of what we asked them is, what further needs do you have? Two, a grade level group, they said that they really need to work on problem solving itself, and also problem solving progressions. What does it look like at each grade level, and how can they challenge the students to solve more complex problems? Yes?
Ms. Scher.
But to Dr. Francis's point, I mean, I was to the degree that I understood your question, we're never going to be able to do what she's asking, because the way you would normally measure an intervention in isolation is you would have a control group where you didn't intervene, and then you'd have one that you did intervene. But we're not in, unless I'm wrong, we're never going to be in a situation where we're going to say, oh, these kids over here, we're not going to teach them and see what happens. So is there really, I'm not familiar with a methodology where you can actually truly isolate a, this has to be done research outside Greenwich Public Schools. It can't be done by us, because we're never going to, we're never going to turn our schools into a lab school where we're actually testing methodologies. True?
Yes.
Was that what you were asking? I don't know how you do that, but not, we don't have a lab school here. Universities have them for this specific purpose.
But what we do have is the reporting from the STAR assessment, as you know. So we identify based on those scale scores, those groups of urgent need, or, you know, we have to immediately intervene, and intervention plans are put in place for those students. So there's that one group. And then the students that perform at the other two levels don't need that level of intervention. However, all students are accessing, so just elementary, let's say for grades three through five, are accessing DreamBox. So as we analyze the weekly reports from DreamBox, we can see where the students are and the internal assessment of that, and then where that program is actually taking them, because that one is adaptive. And then we can wait for this assessment to finish. And DreamBox, among other things, other interventions, if you want to call the work with Greg Tang and the mathematical reasoning happening, we have to decide, you know, what is attributed to the success or the growth of that student. It gets very challenging when it gets really deep. But for those students performing at levels one and two, because it might be a very focused intentional intervention, it's a little easier. So again, because it's like, it might be one concentrated intervention for a certain amount of time with a level of frequency and intensity, so it's just easier. But again, I think we want to finish out this assessment administration, do the analysis, and be able to do that deep dive with you in February. You're right, Dr. Francis, the timing, when we did the plan, it did not work very well for us. But hopefully, the structure of the report may have helped, I don't know.
Ms. Raven and Ms. Davidson.
I thought the structure of the report, excuse me, was helpful, and I was going to ask a question of Policy Governance Committee. Is this format in line with the policy where you're describing the new format?
We did the best we can.
But I thought it was helpful.
This is our fourth outline in six years, so we're trying to keep up just as much as you are.
Oh, I thought it was helpful. And thank you for putting all the questions in line on the web page, rather than a whole separate document. I actually appreciate it, it was like right there.
And we included a glossary.
Yes, I appreciated that. My only kind of add, and it struck me when I got to page three, so it's actually page three, nine, and 10, if we could consider adding year-to-date actuals, like in a third column. I got struck when I saw funding for consultants for professional learning. This is in the Library and Media Services. It went from an actual in 17, 18, to zero, to 18, 19, and to 40,000. And I was just curious, like, we're kind of four months in, have we spent, you know, that money, especially as we think of where we made some budget cuts in 19, 20?
Right. The challenge is, so, how can I explain this? When we're building the budget, it's almost like we're looking at a three-year implementation, and we're straddling budgets, if that makes sense. So when we develop the plan for implementation, we're in a preview, we're trying to secure the funding for it, but it's against the previous year and then the forward year, so that's why you might see some odd numbers like you have here, the zero and then the 40,000, plus it's a new program coordinator analyzing things and making changes going forward. So it's almost like we, you need, it's a three-year plan of implementation across multiple budgets, and straddling as well. It's a challenge for us too, because that's why changes happen, and why we request for transfers, or you'll see such a stark difference.
Ms. Davidson.
Two celebrations, narrowing the achievement gap in Mathematics. Congratulations, I could not be happier. There's been many years of work that went into that, and it's finally paying off. Thank you so much. Second celebration is the introduction of engineering practices, especially with Bob's health. I follow you on Twitter, and I keep up to date, and it's fantastic. It's fantastic. Question for you. This is not a topic I expect in this academic year, but what year could we return to the project plan to introduce computer science, K to 12? What is a good timeframe with all the other work in the district that we could do that?
I'll let Sheila speak, but I do want you to know, given the new budget development, so going through that process, we then need to meet as an academic team, so we have a retreat planned, because it is a bit of a redesign going forward. So it's not to say that we're going to shelve all things, but much like the program review, we need to look within each program, prioritize, and computer science, computational thinking and computer science is front and center, and then what can we do within the budget guidance that we have? So we need to do that internal analysis as well. But Sheila can also speak to the revised approaches.
So last year, when we were dealing with the state deadline to move forward a year for NGSS implementation and the assessment with student reports in 2019, we realized very quickly that that had to be a priority for this past year. So in the meantime, what we're doing collaboratively with Bob is, we are taking a look at what we can do this year to continue, so this is not a year where we're doing nothing, at the same time, taking a look at the programs and revising the implementation plan and development plan. So that's where we are with this work right now. We're at the beginning of that work, and we'll continue it in the February retreat.
And I think we tried to outline some of the work that is happening in the questions. I forget which. Yes. And one of them that we're waiting to hear about, which was recently released through Amazon. Amazon, a potential scholarship for a group of students to engage in engineering. It's a new program by Amazon and coding, so we're hopeful that that would be a summer camp for 100 students. That would be a five, six cohort in the theater school program. And then that can continue as they progress in those middle schools. So that's just one of the activities that we're doing. Like you said, you follow Bob, so you see what we're doing in our classrooms and with our library media services. It's front and center.
Ms. Daniel.
In answer to some of the questions, according to the Next Generation Accountability Index, in 2018, the percentage of students who met or exceeded state growth target was 54.4. And yet, we have a role at 90%. I'm always wondering, that's a huge jump up. How do you kind of address that 40-point jump? Is 90% a realistic goal?
It is an aggressive goal. Yes, it is. But if we set a low goal, our student's going to stay there. So even though it may take a lot of work, we may not get there to say, look, this is what we're striving for. We want 90% to do that. No, we're not, it's going to be hard to do. But we've been there before with other mathematical goals, and it's, I feel, it's better to really set the bar high and have everyone work toward it.
All right. So next time we have goals like this, it would be good to have, because I asked a question, what is the current level of achievement?
Absolutely.
Yes. And then the one last comment, which I've had for seven years, is we are the SMART goals. That was something I've agreed to last year in July with Dr. Gilde and spoken with Mr. Mayo and yourself. So these reports, that's why I say, are they, no. They're the big hole. If you don't have a SMART goal, you don't know what you're aiming for, so all the numbers don't make any sense. So hopefully, next time, we're going to have SMART goals.
Well, I do want to discuss that and share with you our rationale, and I did put it in the questions. And I agree with you, for programs where it makes sense and does not become a barrier, so on page nine, we did include the SMART goals for mathematics, science, the test, the test administration this year will count and will have numbers, and we can work off of that. But for a program like Library Media Services provides the infrastructure, its ever-moving environment, it is very challenging. Because the SMART goal would only be set on circulation right now. I don't know if that would help either one of us, or the students, or the teachers. So I hear you. We will work towards that. If you noticed in the, within that program, we are looking at assessments for, there was once an assessment, it no longer worked for us, and that was eliminated a few years ago. But I'll point out the page. On page five, we do identify as one of our activities under assessment, the development of a benchmark proficiency assessment for those benchmark years. And then perhaps from that, because you'd have that standardized administration, we can develop a SMART goal as measured by. I did share the link of the recent research study from MIT Sloan Business Men that helped inform us, as well as we're talking about the statewide for system for these types of environments.
So I could probably share with you about 10 other studies that go the other way on the SMART.
Of course.
I'm alert, is what I do. Mr. Scher.
I don't have any more. But I'll echo Barbara. I think, yeah, to the policy, if it's something that isn't conducive to a SMART goal, we should still be very clear about what our timeframe for implementation is, what our big swing goals are. I'd love to go for 90%, by the way. I think that's a great idea. And then be able to show the progress against that. I don't think Library Media Services, given we're now going digital, checking out the number of books, you're right, that's not the goal. But there are other goals. How many tweets by Bob? There are other goals that we could set. There are measurable things that happen, interaction with students, things like that, that you can track. They're measurable. We should be doing that, showing where the interactions with kids happen in the classroom and the media center elsewhere. So be creative in your goals, because we do want to know how these services are being utilized.
Okay. Ms. Stowe.
Just more of a comment. Apparently, I'm going to be the cheerleader tonight. Very impressed with the AP scores. I just love going through that and seeing that sort of data on the AP, was it calculus AP, calculus BC? And then, I mean, what was it, AP Physics, I mean, 4.52 for the average. Now, I don't know how many people are taking that. I mean, I guess maybe there were five people taking it, but there were very smart five people. Anyway, very impressed, and I just wanted to point that out that's deep in the report. So thank you.
One thing else. All right. Thank you very much. Keep up the hard work. We appreciate it. All right. So next up would be Program Inventory, how comes private plans and this and that. Make sure there are reviews.
Okay. I'm very excited to bring this program to the board for their information. I have put together a small team of individuals at the Board of Education to help work on this project with me. I should say, they're working on this project, and I'm sitting on, sitting in with them. But Kim, Lori, and Jen Lau have done a great deal of work already on this project. And we've developed a good plan to review each of our programs. We like to find out what exactly is working well for us and for our students, not for us, but for students and what is not, based on multiple outcomes. We also like to determine if our programs are aligned to our mission and our vision of graduate. So that's another thing that we're looking at. We'll take an initial back-looking view of all of our programs using different types of data, student outcomes, cost, et cetera. And we will then do a deeper dive on programs that, where the data jumps out at us and it doesn't, things aren't making sense. So those programs may need more resources, or they may be redundant, or they need less resources. So those are the things that we're doing. But that's after the initial look that we're taking right now. In any event, it's, and we're also looking how all our programs are connected. In any event, it's a great management tool for the superintendent to have and to better understand what is offered by the district and how those programs are, again, I'm treating myself, that they're connected. The superintendent will report results to the board, to the superintendent's report when we have things to report. I mean, it's not going to, it's going to be a lot of work and a lot, once we do the initial work, we'll be bringing in different members of our organization to help us gain a better understanding of the programs that they are in charge of. So that's our, that's our project plan.
Ms. Scher.
Why are we going to the board to start with this? Ralph, thanks for doing this. I would say, thanks for putting this together. The thing, maybe my other board members can help clarify for me. I'm a little puzzled by this. And the reason I'm puzzled by this is I recall your predecessor, we asked your predecessor to do this. It didn't get done. And then when we did her review, she presented all this, got it all ready, got it project managed, we're ready to go, to go do program reviews, so that we can actually get those. And she implied that there was a full-blown methodology behind it. She actually came into the meeting, obviously, that was a closed meeting, but she came in with all kinds of stuff. She put up on the screen about doing it, and she was talking about this accomplishment of it being ready to go do program reviews. So the thing I'm puzzled is, this to me is like a start over. So I'm just wondering, what was leveraged off of the work that she told the board she had already done and it was completed and ready to rip?
It's a good question, Peter. One of the things that we've taken, I don't know if we've taken it from Jill or not, and maybe Kim or Lori can help you with that, but one of the things we did take was how we're looking at the purpose of the program, the success metrics, it was the number of students served, directed expense, and then staffing and administration and results. So we did take that from some documents that Jill left us, right?
Okay. Then my next, my other question that follows on to that is, we used to, I don't know, we used to get these things called monitoring reports. And, hold on just one second. And the content of the monitoring report was essentially this. I mean, that was part of our frustration. That was why we used to get 80-page documents. So I'm, I guess I'm just puzzled because that was this normal rhythm, and we'd get it for every program we had. So, but this sounds like it needs to be, from here, this sounds like it needs to be created from scratch. So that puzzles me a little bit. Can, because it looks like this program review says, we're going to look at, what was the purpose of the program? What was its job? What was its alignment? What kind of resources were being spent? How was it measuring success? What were the success metrics? What are those metrics and how is it performing? That was all the stuff we used to get in a monitoring report. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's different.
And you're still going to get an academic report on the different programs. What we're doing is, every program, all at once. And that's a, it's a deeper, I mean, not deeper, but it's a different look, a different view for us as administrators, to make sure that we have good alignment and we're not, and that we're funding programs that, that need to be funded and maybe moving programs that are redundant.
I'm just wondering if we ought to, here's the, my last one.
It's different than reporting on just one academic program.
I'm wondering if we ought to do one, like do one, and then we all look at it, and then we all say, is this what we're going to need? And run one through like a pilot before we try to do 80 of them? Because then, see, the best thing that would come out of this, Ralph, would be, we'd finally get, in some programs, we, when we do monitoring reports, and I tell you, we get great alignment between the board and the administration. Sometimes other programs, they don't come through, and we don't get great alignment, for whatever reason. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, it just doesn't happen. This is a great opportunity. I'm just wondering if maybe we ought not to try one on for size, run it through, and then if that one works, then go repeat it for every program in the place. Just as an idea.
And Peter, we did, we did take one program and go through it. No, you didn't see it, but, and it's not part of this attachment, but we decided that we would see what it looked like. So we did go through one program.
Ms. Raven.
I think the thing that Jill was showing is, I don't know if it was specifically program review, but I do remember what you said, it was some kind of project plan, and it was like multiple project plans. I think the benefit of this program review in this style is the monitoring reports are in isolation, and we have no comparison for one thing to another, like in a really easy format. And it probably wouldn't make sense to see what one looked like before you went and did the work for multiple ones. I just had a question, and it was based on the answer to a question that was in the, on the board doc site. It was the GPS Strategic Tiles and Accountability Index will be used as success metrics for each program snapshot. And it keeps reminding me that we don't have targets for all our titles, or tiles.
Right.
So I want to somehow get into that.
And, and I agree, and it's embarrassing when you put up the tiles and there's no data there. So now, this, one of the things that this committee's going to do is get those metrics in place for the, for those titles that have blank in the beginning here.
Dr. Francis, another statement.
Two questions. One, or maybe one sort of more of a comment slash question. You know, it looks like, and I can understand why, sort of, there's a definition program where it's sort of a substantial amount of money or substantial. But one of the things that I think, you know, we talk a lot about is, you know, you have little, a new little strategy or a new little, what's the word I'm looking for? We keep putting in a new thing that we're trying to do, and, and we keep building them up. And they may not all be big, but there may be lots of them, and they might not be very well-aligned. And so, I don't know which phase of the project we want to do it in, but I think we want to try and look at all of those things. Because again, you know, lots of little things may distract us from the bigger things, and so sort of try to find a way to weed that out. So I think that's, I guess, more of a comment than a question, but just sort of a different thing. And then the other...
Again, time, you know, we heard that loud and clear, because there was a list of different offerings and different services that were provided through the middle school and high school, and we're taking a look at them, so.
Initiatives is the word I was looking for. The other thing I wanted to understand, sort of, one is understand what it is, and then it didn't seem like there was a buildup to it. It seems pretty important, at least from what I'm interpreting it to be, which is finalize, prioritization, matrix, criteria. So that, to me, sounds like, okay, what do you think of these things, and how are you going to judge them? And that seems like a pretty big thing, and I don't find anything before that says like draft a prioritization matrix criteria, or, you know, bring that to the board to discuss kind of thing. And that seems to me like, one big thing is what the data we want to see. Well, so one is, one is what do we want to see to help us evaluate? And two is what are our criteria going to be to evaluate it? So those, to me, seem like two really big concepts that we want to make sure we flush through really well, you know, kind of before we're in the weeds.
Ms. Tate.
Lori, this comment is not meant in any way to say that your functions are not equally important to every other function in the district. But I notice that we are evaluating other slush administrative programs, transportation, human resources, facilities, business office. They are integral, they are important, they are top-tier activities. We can't exist without the backbone of our system. However, when we do these evaluations, I doubt that we're going to come to a realization that we need to eliminate any of them, to consolidate any of them, to put more money into any of them. I, I just wonder, are we using our time effectively? They are integral, but should we be focused on the student, the direct services to students that are in classrooms? I don't know how else to describe it.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I think there can be continuous improvement in all the areas of our operation. So, not just on the instructional side, but also on the operations side. And I think that's something that Lori has been committed to since we all hired her last year, and she just wants to make our, our operations that much better. So, and you heard tonight, some criticism about our operations. So we can, we definitely get better, but we can't get better unless we review them closely.
And then Jennifer, I think, you know, when they do the prioritization, hopefully, they'll take some huge issues first, the programs and the administration is very important. So Ralph, one of the things that I noted and heard others say, intermediate check-ins with the board, I think are going to be very important so that we're all aligned, because I think we all appreciate what the end goal is, which is, it's dual-purpose, right? One, it has an effect on what programs are working, should we do more of, or should we do less of. And when we get to the budget process next year, this is going to feed directly into that. So, you know, when you have the total list of the programs you're going to evaluate, you can share that with the board and talk about it in the super table. You know, there's a bunch of experienced parents and teachers and administrators that are here. We may find something you're missing just because we have a different perspective, confirming the framework, confirming your measures, things of that sort. So, you know, I kind of echo Peter's sentiment of, if you've done the pilot, you know, if you, if you're ready to share that or not, that at some point, we should make sure that what, what you're doing is the same thing we are seeing and thinking about, so that we have that alignment all the way through to the end. Because when we get to the budget development process next year, if we're not aligned, this is not valuable use for every time.
Just a comment. I don't want to make this, this project plan about budget. I want to make it about continuous improvement.
Right. Yes. Dr. Francis.
I would echo a bunch of comments, and one of the things I think after here, this comment, would be to add that maybe what we do is one, a couple of things. One is, sort of, as I was thinking, four sort of phases of the project, because obviously there's a lot here. So do we do this in different phases? And it also may be that as we look at... And it also may be that as we look at, um, things that may be more related to transportation or buildings or other functioning, maybe our criteria or maybe the way we organize it might be different. So we may not need to force everything into one model and maybe regroup those things in ways that kind of makes sense for us to be evaluating them. And, you know, that means different days, different meetings, different something. Um, not that they're not all important, but maybe we view them in a different way or at different times.
Any other comments on this? So I would expect we'll hear again about this during the superintendent updates. And then we can always interrupt. This is a.
Good question. Is there a, um, a delivery date for this?
Yeah, speak to the plan. It's in the plan. Yes, it's all, I'm sorry.
All right, so, okay, so.
Right, what's missing is a couple more check-ins.
Well, that's, that's why I was wondering, if we, if we wanted to give specific check-in or approximate check, to check, to figure it out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll review, I'll update progress on our work as we move, as we move along.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is new policies. Dr. Francis, if you have to introduce the item.
Okay, so, um, on the first read, um, I got a recommendation that for policy seven one zero zero, um, uh, there's a, a part of a phrase that says, or to preserve racial and ethnic balance. Did that be removed? Um, I'm assuming we would leave in the achievement of racial balance part of the phrase. Is there any feedback on that? It's okay. In seven one zero zero, that policy, uh, when it talks about planning for construction and it has different criteria, it says attention shall also be given to how facilities can be utilized to improve.
Is this, can I ask, is that a bit confusing? Are these the, the new policies or is that? Is it the first read or is it the second?
We have first read or second?
We're in first read.
I think it was the first read.
Seven one hundred, right?
Right, but before we take this back to PGC to determine whether or not we're going to change it, I just wanted to get a little feedback from the board to see if they agreed with removing that.
So it's the last one.
Yeah, seven one zero zero, new construction and it talks about the planning and how you do it. It talks about achievement, um, uh, African achievement, and then it talks about racial, ethnic and economic isolation. Um, and there was a suggestion to remove that portion of the, the planning.
So you're just going to change to preserve racial balance? It's the last one.
The last one. First read, first read. Just to go all the way to the end. You know, I have a. So where do the, can we just clarify the words you just made?
Yeah, I mean, I think because it's, we'll double check, but because it still says we're going to try to maintain racial balance, I think that likely achieves what the state is requiring and it just doesn't go on to that further explanation of it.
So I guess, uh, if it's consistent with the state statute, then I, I don't have any issue with it. Anybody else? And new policies? Ms. Raven.
The last sentence.
Not the last sentence, there's a couple of words at, at the end of the second full paragraph and basically we're, after isolation.
Sorry, I think, I'm sorry.
So I guess when you bring these back, um, just let us know where you landed. All right, Ms. Stowe.
Just on fifty one forty four point one, I obviously wrote down the comments that we heard loud and clear from PTAC and KDU, and I think that's something we should discuss back at our committee.
Okay. Anything else on this? All right, so thank you, PGC, for continuing the, uh, the hard work of moving forward with the new policy system. And we look forward to hearing about these in February. With that, we are going to move on to our action items. So the first action item is the MOU for school resource officers. Mr. Mayow.
Okay, before you, you have a one-year agreement for the Greenwich Police Department to provide two SROs to the Greenwich public schools. And that one-year agreement is based on whether, um, Chief Heavy can get the funding for the second SRO in fiscal year twenty. This agreement discusses duties of the SRO, what the police department is responsible for, um, and what we're responsible for. It also discusses the qualifications of the SRO and, uh, how are they going to be evaluated? And if it was, that happens, termination replacement. So it's all in here in this document and I sent this to you about, I would say, a week and a half ago for your review. So, um, it's pretty straightforward. I think one of the things that, uh, we were worried about when this first came out was, uh, who was going to pay for the second SRO and, and Mr. Heavy has put that into his budget. So hopefully that'll get passed and we'll have two SROs at Greenwich High School because we have a very large, uh, high school of, uh, and square feet wise, uh, even two SROs is probably not enough. But I think it's a, it's a great way to keep our students safe.
Ms. Stowe, and then this is a.
I think it's a wonderful memorandum. I appreciate that you have a three-year tenure for the SRO. That's really important to build relationships with students, so thank you for that. On page six, under evaluation, prior to June thirtieth of each year, the effectiveness of the SRO program will be evaluated. That's fantastic, however, is it evaluated by James Heavy? Is it evaluated by our superintendent? Is it a joint evaluation? Is it the high school principal? I would just love to know more details.
The, uh, evaluation of the SRO, um, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not familiar with who does it. I know it's not the superintendent. It may be between the high school principal and the, and the, uh, police, police chief, but I'm not sure. Rick, you have any?
We're going to get that clarified.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Zerel.
Um, yeah, that was one of my questions too about evaluation and what the criteria for evaluation was. Um, I think it's great that we have this agreement and that the board is, is seeing it. Uh, I would like to see it go back to policy governance for the, just for the fact of a few wordings. One is to include reference to our policy five one four two point four. Um, also to include the fact that the chair should sign this and representing the board since it's an agreement between the board and the police department as well as the superintendent. Um, uh, there was a few grammar things and also the page seven that was in there couldn't be read. So I would, and, and since Ralph mentioned on policy governance, it wouldn't take us about ten minutes to straighten this all out and get it back to the board.
So if you are taking it up, um, there's one item I want to point out, which is, so basically we've been operating under an agreement that's been in place for a while. We ought to put language in here that this automatically renews or how it will renew, whatever the process is, so that we don't need to see this unless we need to have a discussion about it. Because I think there's agreement on the board, we think this is a valuable program, it's baked into our policy, and I don't want anything, any action or no action from the board, putting up, uh, the assignment of all the services and making sure that they're ready to go on day one to school. So, um, maybe when you're at PGC, we can just, put some renewal language in here. And I don't think Chief Heavy would have agreed to that, can imagine.
Yeah. All right, any, so right now, we haven't put a motion on the table. I think Ralph, if you're agreeable, maybe what, what you can do is work with the Policy Governance Committee and we can bring it back as an action item in our, kind of our February meeting. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. February twenty first. Great, thank you. So Kim, if we could add that as an item for February twenty first? All right, I'll let it. Um, all right, so then the next is the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school calendar revision. Before Mr. Mayow goes, I will tell you that, uh, I got the email from the registrars of voters when the election, when primary day was set. It was well after, almost, I don't know, a year after we voted on this calendar. So we are beholden to the state for setting primary day and they don't really pay any attention to the fact that we set the school calendar. So you can thank this.
Uh, school calendar, Linda tells me you recommend the option one, so I'm going with option, no, seriously. Option one would be our, uh, the administration's, uh, recommendation.
Does somebody want to make a motion to put this on the, that's the measure?
Why not option two?
Ralph?
You don't want to open school on the twenty third of the year. We don't think we'll have a lot of attendance.
Was that the reason?
That would be mine.
Yeah, no, I understand how this town works after a few years.
It's a, it's not a great instructional day, I'll put that.
Yeah, do we think we're going to have the same experience with Columbus Day?
We've had, we've had good attendance with Columbus Day.
I know people use it as a scapegoat, so, okay, whatever.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to put this on the table?
Ms. Stowe, so the motion is to accept option one, the revised twenty nineteen twenty twenty school calendar.
You want me to make the motion? You said it.
Please do.
I said yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to accept option one of the revised twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year calendar.
Second from this, the motion by Ms. Stowe, second from Ms. Dayton. Any further discussion?
All right, I, I will say, I'm, I'm sad to see the, the day go because the original purpose, I believe, when we voted on this was because, because of the allowing for people to take those college visits and that was a, a big day for that. Yes, exactly.
Dr. Francis.
I also saw the other, thought the other part of it was that it was really great to have a professional learning day that early in the school year too and a really front load of those. So, you know, I do, I mean, I, yeah, I don't love it. I mean, I don't know that I've got a great other solution, but, but it, you know, I, I mean, I, even as a board member, I would confess that, you know, I, I don't think I'd have my kids go, we travel for Christmas, so the twenty third, I mean, I think school would be half empty, so I, I, you know, I don't know about that. And President's Day, I think there's some people who might have either. So, I mean, I, I would love to find another solution in the future because I think there's a bunch of reasons why we felt like that Columbus Day was good. Uh, but for now, I don't see that we've been offered something that I'd like better.
Ms. Scher.
I'd like to make a amendment to your motion. Except option one is revised on two thousand nineteen twenty, and there shall be no tests administered on, uh, Columbus Day. So I would add to this, and there shall be no tests administered in Greenwich public schools on Columbus Day.
Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Stowe's second, so it's on the table.
Okay, that way it preserves the, um, if, it preserves this opportunity that we were trying to create in the first place. And if a parent wants to make a choice for a senior or what have you, let them do that. It would not, don't put that, let's not, let's not put ourselves in a position where, um, what we tried to do, what we tried to do in the first place, we can preserve part of what we were trying to do in the first place if we so choose. That's why I'm making the motion.
So I, I appreciate the sentiment. Um, I just don't think the board actually has the, uh, the wherewithal to do that, so why not? I, I don't think we can direct them how to actually administer exams and teach. I, I think the sentiment is absolutely right, but I, I don't think that that's the board's responsibility.
Any other discussion on that? All right, so there's a motion on the table to amend, uh, the motion and the language is to, uh, to basically prevent tests on Columbus Day. Did I get that right, Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Do you have something to say?
Dr. Francis.
Sorry. I, I, I understand the sentiment. I find it a little awkward to, um, make that kind of rule at a board level. Um, I think I might encourage the superintendent and headmaster to have some leniency for juniors and seniors who are leaving, to have an easy makeup policy if we feel that's an appropriate thing for them to do. But I'm not sure I, I feel that I want to vote to, to make that kind of rule.
Ms. Scher.
We have a hundred and eighty school days. And we can't communicate to the superintendent that one out of those a hundred and eighty, we don't want tests administered? I mean, we can talk about the procedure of this, but this, this is our job. So I'm, I, I'm, I'm amazed by it, but okay. And Ralph, if you want to say something or you want to say, hey, I don't, uh, okay, we won't administer tests on that day. I mean, you administer the school system, that's good enough for me. I don't need to make a motion to do that, but if you want full freedom to administer every single one hundred and eighty days out of the year, okay, I suppose then that'll be the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Mayow.
Peter, there's lots of days that we tell our, our staff not to administer tests and quizzes. I don't know if I want to add another one to that list. Um, I don't like to make a rule that may not be enforceable. Um, among, uh, a lot of three hundred staff members at the high school alone.
Ms. Dayton. I'll do whatever you've got.
I'd like to encourage Ms. Raven through the headmaster's forum, through the exec com at the high school in which student government meets with a board member and meets with our headmaster to take this topic up.
And our superintendent.
And our superintendent and see if the students can apply some pressure through that forum. If it's in their interest, I'm sure they're advocating for it. Um, so our job is to stand back and let the students tell the administration what's best for them.
All right, any discussion on this?
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion. I mean, this is like one of the most comical conversations, but go ahead. Sure, go ahead, I'll withdraw the motion.
Ms. Scher, motion's on the table, it's been seconded, so we certainly can take a vote on the motion. It's a motion to amend. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, six, all those abstaining. So the, the motion to amend failed, zero, six. Mr. Scher, you abstained by not voting, so that's an extension. Okay, so now we're back to our original motion, which is to accept option one of the revised twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year calendar. All those in favor? Seven, zero, thank you. All right, so next up on the agenda is a donation of a Greenwich High School baseball scoreboard and pitch count. Let's skip the new policies, maybe I just don't want to talk about. Um, Dr. Francis, uh, new, it's the second read, new policies is the action item.
So I move to have the board accept the policies included with the removal of policies, uh, one 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 zero point two and one 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 zero point four, those require further amendment.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second. Maybe, Dr. Francis, you want to explain where we are with this?
Yeah, so these are, um, all second reads. Um, there were two other things that were changed, uh, that were sent out to the board. Um, one was, uh, the added phrase about, um, giving more specific direction in terms of the goals, uh, for parent involvement. And the other was that on policy six one eight zero, which is the, um, policy on our program reviews, uh, there's more detail about expectations for following the policy. I have one more edit that was suggested that's not included.
Do you want to do this as a motion to amend? Okay. Ms. Dayton.
I'd like to make a motion to amend policy one thousand, which is the first one in the pack. packet, under item four, to solicit and consider community opinions about the school system. I would like to add after the word "system," including position requirements for the hiring of superintendent. I think it's important that we maintain a very structured process in choosing our top leader for the district. It impacts all families, all students, all policies, and any future board members out there should know that that's a generally accepted practice, and I hope that in future years, we will follow that process.
Is there a second for that motion? Hearing none? Oh, Dr. Francis will second. All right, any discussion on that? It's a motion to amend policy 1000?
I mean, if I'm understanding you, that it's to consider the community opinions on this?
Yes. So it seems to favor the 1004.
Any further discussion on that? So this is the motion to amend 1000. All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Two, three, four, oh, it's a motion to amend 1000. Yep, all those in favor? Two, all those against? Three, all those abstaining? Two, so the motion fails. All right, so back to the original motion on the table, it's the adoption of policies with the exceptions. All right, Ms. O'Neil.
Policy, policy 1110.1, establish a family and community. Okay, so the policy reads, the board directs the superintendent to establish a family, community, district engagement plan, which each school will be responsible for implementing. I would like to change that to include the responsibility of the district office to also have a plan and implement the communication plan. So my proposed change is, the board directs the superintendent to establish a family and community district engagement plan, which the central office, administration, and each school is responsible for implementing. So the only change is to include central office, because they need to have a plan that they're held responsible for as well.
Is there a second? Dr. Francis, discussion, Dr. Francis?
Well, I was just going to say, just to clarify, this is the sentence that we added in, so we're just letting modifying the sentence that was added in.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion to, oh, sure, Ms. Raven.
Do you call it central office?
Kim, what would you like to make?
District office, central office.
Central office?
Administration.
Central administration.
Central administration? All right, so you'd like to change the motion to central administration? Dr. Francis still second to that one? All right, any other discussion on this? All right, so the motion is to add, the motion is to amend the 1110.1, to add central administration along with the each school responsibility. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to amend? Ms. Tate? No? Okay, so six, all those against? Are you against? Okay, so passes six one, thank you. All right, so we're back to the original motion on the table.
Can we read that full motion one more time so I can accurately?
So the line, it's a motion to amend the sentence in 1110.01, after district engagement plan, it will say which central administration and each school is responsible for implementing.
Just.
Any central office?
Just which central administration.
No more passive voice. Got beat out of me in law school. All right, so we're back to the original motion now with the amendment. Any other discussion on this? All right, so the motion is to adopt this series of policies with the two removals and the one amendment. All those in favor? All those against? Passes six one, thank you very much. Okay, now we can get to the donation of the GHS baseball scoreboard and pitch count. Ms. O'Donnell, come on down.
The Greenwich High School has received a donation from the Diamond Club for a, for the purchase and installation of a baseball scoreboard with pitch count. The donation comes in the amount of $12,820, and we're looking for the board's approval of that donation. In line with the budget resolution, once the donation is accepted, we will certainly have to comply with all of the town's regulations in terms of installation, which we will do. There was also a follow-up question, once we put this out, that whether this had to go out to bid. It's under the threshold for bidding, but it would be put in on our part to obtain additional quotes, which we can do as well.
All right, somebody want to move the item to the table? So Ms. O'Neil needs to authorize the donation of the scoreboard for $12,820. Second, Dr. Francis, on the roll. Discussion, Ms. O'Neil?
Are we going to need an M.I.? I don't believe so. We're simply replacing the board that's there.
It might be good to clarify since it came up at a meeting the other night, and it did come up at another time with the high school football.
We didn't have to do it for the, for the stadium, for the football stadium, the scoreboard. So I have no reason to believe we have to do it in this case.
Any other discussion? So does the girls softball team also use this field, or is it just boys baseball? Just wondering, is a scoreboard that's going to need to be replaced one day? All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donation for the GHS scoreboard? Seven, zero, thank you to the Greenwich High School Diamond Club. I have no idea who you are, but the girls softball team would like to talk to you. All right, so next up, actually, it says Ms. O'Donnell, but it's probably me, because I have to sign this thing. So this is an authorization for the superintendent, and actually, it's the superintendent and the chair to approve the New Lebanon School State application for playground and other equipment. By way of background, the playground equipment that's currently at the school is not coming over to the school, so we need to replace that equipment as part of our educational program. We have sufficient funds within the New Lebanon School budget, as I keep saying, we are under budget, to support this request. We are eligible, if we do it this way, for state reimbursement, just the same as the building. We do not expect to have to come back to the BOE or the RTM for additional BET, additional funds at this point. We are managing our process and hopefully managing it well. And these equipment, as I mentioned, they're not coming over from the existing building. So basically, these are things that we needed in the new building, it's playground equipment and some other equipment that just needs to be purchased. So this allows us to actually put it into the, into the new lead plan, makes it eligible for the funding. So I'll make the motion to authorize the superintendent and board chair to approve the New Lebanon School State application for playground and other equipment. Is there a second? Dr. Francis, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Passes seven, zero, thank you. Mr. Mayo, just stick around after the meeting, I have it right here in full, but we're ready to sign. All right, next up, budget transfers, Ms. O'Donnell.
Okay, we are submitting, we have three separate transfers that we're submitting for approval. I think there were some follow-up questions, and the answers were provided to the, to the board doc. Are there any additional questions that I can answer at this time on the items that we're putting forward?
All right, so I love budget transfers, as you well know. Right, okay. So first, thank you, traffic study, long time coming, looking forward to getting the results of that and moving forward and being good neighbors. Second, this, this is the first time this year I've seen money for the overage and out-of-district placement coming from places other than the sped budget. That is concerning to me, so I know that we're over, I don't know what that number is, I'm a little confused, so maybe if we're back to this, I thought we were at $600,000, I don't know where this puts us. I would appreciate it if we tried to find that money within the sped budget, if we can.
And if I could comment on that, the sped budget was over budget last year, holistically, not just on that line item. So we did look to the transfers that we did at year end in order to try to fund as much of the funding that they're now, you know, asking or needing at this point, from the same sort of sources that we identified at year end. At this point, we don't feel we can put any more pressure on the overall special education budget, which is why, why you see transfers coming from other areas, where other areas have worked really hard to help us find those savings to fund this effort.
All right, other discussion? Somebody want to make a motion to put this on the table? All right. Captain, you want to?
Make a motion to approve budget transfers greater than $10,000.
Is there a second? Dr. Francis, you're in roll. All right, any further discussion? Ms. O'Neil?
Why, well, two questions. Why is it taking us so long to do this study, traffic study? And what is it, what is the goal of the study?
Why it's taken us so long? Because this year, I wanted to be sure that every transfer that was unplanned for, that we didn't have budgeted in our budget, had a funding source before we actually executed any PO or service. And of course, with special ed coming up first, we needed to find those monies first. So it did take us some time, some time to scrub the budget to look for this $73,000 that we need to conduct the study.
I wasn't pointing the finger at you, I was thinking, but didn't it say somewhere that I read that this would request going back several years, this traffic study?
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not you. That's my question, why now is this coming up, and what's the goal of this study?
There's a Hillside Committee that, I guess, has formed, that has gone back and looked at all of the P and D, P and Z conditions that were placed on the C of O for MISA. So one of the, one of the items that was discovered, I guess, when, when that Hillside Committee met, identified this commitment to perform a traffic impact study several times throughout the, the construction of the MISA building. So having not complied with that, we of course need to comply with at least the, the final version, or the final report.
Mr. Scher?
But that's not right. No, I know you're newer on this, okay? Chris Winters has been asking this, asking for this for years. He brought it up in the start time committee five, six, seven times. And, you know, we, we have so courted to do it, we asked Jill to do it, I, I mean, I guess I'm glad it's getting done, but it's not a new discovery. It's just somebody just never, we went over it numerous times, and people just ignored it and didn't do it. I feel bad for Chris, because if you've got a kid at the high school, like really some people don't anymore, go drive your kid to school in the morning and see how gooey that thing is. And it's, it's got largely to do with the way we've got our parking lots configured and the way it works. So Laurie, just remind me, when is this going to be done now?
So we are, I'm trying to remember the timeline now, did I include it here? So if this is approved, we, that it needs to go to the BET for approval, and right now, that next meeting date isn't until February 12th, so we can't actually execute the PO. Perhaps a special meeting.
Whenever it is, when would you, when are we anticipating?
So we're expecting it to be hopefully completed by the end of May. Funding can be in place before March 1st. If we can issue them the PO by March 1st, then we expect half is done by May.
Let me just highlight this, you probably know this, it's really important it's done before seniors leave.
Right.
Right, because it's useless if it's done after they're gone. Is it going to get done before they leave for internship?
I mean, it should be, because most of the work and accounting will be done earlier, and then the reporting gets done toward the end, so when we were looking at.
Because if they're not going to get it done, they should do it in September or October, just do not do it at the end of the year, because that would just be, we could go in the bathroom and flush the money down the toilet, it would be cheaper.
No, absolutely, that wouldn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? It's a motion on the table, let's accept the budget transfers, all those in favor? Seven, zero, thank you very much. Another paper, the financial and staffing report.
All right, so here for your approval is the report for a period ending December 24th. I'm happy to take any questions on the report.
After we move on to motion to put this on the table, Ms. Tate? Is there a second? Francis, do you have a second? Financial and staffing report, any discussion? Ms. Tate?
Congratulations that the capital projects manager is now finalist in the process. You've selected the finalists. When does that person accept your offer, and can we expect a start date? Anytime this month?
That person has accepted the offer and begins on Monday.
Wonderful, congratulations.
Right, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We're making them come in on Monday.
So Laurie, on the capital items, thank you for numbering the list and making the print bigger for old time's eyes. We always get you to the end of the meeting, try harder to look at them. But it almost seems to me the list is growing. I don't know if it's just the size of the font, or you've got more items.
No, 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 let me explain. So we kind of keep going back and forth between, I know at one point, someone had asked, can we knock off the ones that are completed? But when we knock off the ones that are completed, they still have balances, and so we're not really showing you the full picture. And I kind of keep going back and forth on this, because I really want you to see everything that's out there and open with balances, because that's exactly what the BET is looking at. So this report is supposed to mirror exactly what BET is seeing whenever they run it on a regular basis, and so when you see 100% completes, they may have a location within a project number that has an available balance that's still subject to the financial closeout.
Gotcha. So what might also be helpful is to know how many items you've taken off the list, I hope you're keeping a running count, how many you've taken off the list, how much money is lapsed to the town, and timelines for closing out that whole list, like them are the biggest.
So I've been brainstorming about different ways to show you this. I have all these visuals in mind, because this is very data-heavy. So we're, we're still working with the capital projects review team and external auditors, and so we're looking to hear some of their feedback as well. So hopefully, this report will continue to evolve and be more informative as time goes by.
Mrs. Tate?
Since you're in front of the microphone, is there any update from the state on Western Middle Schools Field?
Not as of yet. Not as of yet, since our last, since our last update. We're still trying to coordinate a meeting with them.
Do we owe them anything on Western?
Uh, no, I mean, Ralph, perhaps you may want to, if there's something I'm missing, but I think we're just, we're waiting for the consultants to schedule time with the, with the regulators.
One of the problems with the, again, that's slowing us down, is the government shutdown has impacted our ability to meet with the different government agencies that are going to give us, or we're going to present a plan to, from our consulting. So that meant, that means we're supposed to be scheduled this month, and it's, I don't know if it's on the books for this month because of what I just said, but we are, we have all our results, we have all our testing done, we're just meet, ready, waiting to meet with the EPA and make a deal.
Any further discussion on the financial and staffing report? Ms. Scher?
Laurie, just a quick question on fiscal, oh, good, it's numbered right. Item number 115, the athletics for Greenwich High School. So just so I understand this, this is, do we just not, so this, this budget will not roll over, am I correct? I'm just trying to understand that.
All capital projects roll over, technically speaking.
Okay, so we basically have another $118,000 on some sort of Greenwich High School athletic facility that we can use?
Yes, and this is from.
Is this what this is?
No, this Cardinal Field has.
Be more accurate.
Project number.
I'm just trying to think what this might be. Maybe it's in a combination of things, perhaps?
Eight ninety-nine.
Okay.
Eight ninety-nine, so yes, I actually do believe. 899, so yes, I actually do believe it is partially, I believe this is actually three projects, and this is where the reporting gets tricky, because I think we have three high school projects going on under the athletics division. So I want to say, this is going back to 18, this may be the locker room, it could also be some funding that was set aside for, I want to say, lighting, which we've been looking at closing out, and there's one other one that escapes me at the moment.
Oh, and the gym floor, could that be it?
All right, Ms. O'Neil.
I don't usually keep track of capital projects, but I was wondering if we put the capital projects for Millbank in this budget as we do it, because I, as I say, I don't pay a whole lot of attention to it. But what I guess concerns me, and has concerned me for a while, is that Millbank is not part of our facilities plan. And we use it all the time, we spend money, I want the answer to the question, but I said, oh, you know, what are we doing last year, a lot of work there. So it's sort of like, not, it's not being accurate by not having it part of our plan, and then accounting for it along with all the other projects that we do. So someone's got to solve this plan, because we use it, it's part of our plan, and for it not to be part of the plan is a huge oversight. It's not your oversight.
Any other discussion on the financial and staffing report? All right, so all those in favor? All right, passes seven zero, thank you. Okay, agenda plan, so Kim, I've heard school lunch for February. The other thing was, Mr. Chair, I don't know, you had mentioned a career tech ed pathways program, I don't know if you want to add that to the agenda in February, or as ready? We can do it as an update, however, I'm not sure we had mine.
I don't know that we need an item. I mean, my point is, I think the board's been told things along the way. I don't know when we do, we're going to have before us a course study guide, so this is 2019-20. The question I was asking was, and I don't want to get in the way, I think I'm closing 2019-20. I think the more important part is, when you talk about Rite Tech, and you talk about that being one of the lead strategies for the career pathways education, right? I haven't seen, okay, so how do we take our program that exists right now, and now that we have, may have Rite Tech as an option, how do those two course catalogs get lined up? I'm thinking of this as, well, maybe not correctly, is, once Rite Tech is available as an option, and it's dual degree, unlike AIT, AIT you have to pick one or the other, right? Their course catalog essentially becomes a supplement to our course catalog, right? Because if you have something at Rite Tech that someone can take, why would we duplicate it at Greenwich High School, as an example? So I just want to see the exercise of how those two things get reconciled. And I don't know, and I heard Ms. Parisi say, which I've heard many times before, well, the board needs to provide guidance. I'm not sure I know what that means, but if there's something, it seems to be the implication over and over, that the board is not providing sufficient guidance, and that guidance is needed by the administrators on this topic. So what I'm saying is, if that's needed, then let's get that on the agenda, whatever that means, get guidance, and let's get it done, so we unstick whatever needs, whatever stuck.
I think the first thing we should do is get an update from Rick.
Yes, I agree, I agree. I think, but I think, Mr. Bernstein is not, was not saying when, he was saying, what's the item? Regardless of when it's going to get scheduled.
We're all as a TBD for now, and I think it follows then...
But I would like to, and I don't want to talk about it right now, in agenda planning, you, Peter, you and Jennifer do this with Ralph in your regular meeting, agenda planning meeting? I've just heard over and over again, need guidance, need guidance, need guidance, somebody should get to the bottom of that, and if we need that, then let's get it done.
Ms. O'Neil?
Last week, we all, many of us questioned our frustration about fields. But I don't think we gave the administration clear guidance as to what we wanted, or any kind of deliverable, and so I'd like to see fields be put on the agenda so that we can have that conversation.
So basically, an update on the, what that future MOU would look like?
Well, that, but also the things that we talked about that we needed in order to be apprised of the maintenance of our fields, how are we going to collaborate with the parts department, Parks and Rec, scheduling of our fields, I mean, there's a lot of items that need to be addressed, and we need to list those and then ask the administration to deal with that, and then come back with an answer, because otherwise, we spend every year complaining about the fields, the condition of the fields, but unless we have a plan to address it, we're spinning on wheels.
Mr. Chair, I agree with the sentiment, Ms. O'Neil, but it sure feels like now we're, this is where I get whipsawed with this stuff, on some items, we're like, it's the superintendent's responsibility. When you talk about the scheduling of fields and maintenance of fields and what have you, yes, I'm interested in learning about it, but that sounds like we are really getting into the management, the management, which is the prerogative of the superintendent. I would discourage that. If somebody's got an information request, request it.
I think I made it clear that we wanted to list what we needed, and that, I think I made it really clear, that the superintendent would then deal with it in terms of plan and communication and whatever. So yes, I'm not telling him how to do it.
Dr. Francis?
First to comment on that, which would be, I believe I saw, updated lots and lots of notes, so maybe just a summary of the notes, and then we can say, yeah, the second The other thing I was going to say, just to be sure that we have the SRO, MOU additive.
Anything else? Dr. Francis, did you want to make one more motion tonight? I'll second that. All those in favor? Oh, wait, Kim, hang on. Did you have one?
Yes, food services, I've got in my notes for February.
And then, it's not on the agenda plan now, but this is from the last meeting, but I think we're looking at adding Western to March 28th. There was a Parks and Rec, I think, action item from May 16th, but now I'm hearing we're going to have an update in March, March? And then, policy 4112 is going to come back February 21st, too, I think. But that'll be part of probably your policy governance, but it was a leftover from last
All right, I think there's a motion on the table, do adjourn, all those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you very much.